It's 7:00, April 18th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Yeah. All right, you have before you the minutes of the April 4th, 2023 Regular Council Committee meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, additions?
I'll move to approve those. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the Star Superintendent Bob Britton and Treasurer Ryan Cook here to talk to us today.
Well, thank you for having to come in here today. We just wanted to come in here and let you know that with Mr. Cook's tremendous job that he did, and we've looked at the pool not being open, he came to me about two weeks ago and says, hey, you know what, Bob, I think we have some money that we can let the city have to open the pool this summer, you know, in exchange for buying our kids' pool passes of the summer. Mr. Cook came through with some federal funding that we have, or state funding from 21st Century Grant money. We can put that building into the pool open so our kids have something to do this summer so the pool's not closed, if the council will still accept. So, Mr. Cook, go ahead.
Thanks. Actually, we use general fund monies less than federal funds. ORC allows us to partner with municipalities. I want to thank Kevin, reached out to Kevin, talked with Mayor Reeser, we were able to get this put together. Our proposal is to fund a pool pass for every student pre-K through 12, approximately 1,000. We don't have firm figures from the city looking for that, but I think it's a fact that that could be easy if we have the water for them this summer. I know you've struggled with that. I can't take all the credit for this, platter of effort. My assistant Judy and I had some conversations on it. She's kept me up to date with things that belong here at the city level. Got creative with things, found a way to make this happen. I think it's a big step for the city and the community and our kids in the district. So, probably one of the better decisions. I've been pleased to be a part of over the years, so I'll probably be here and hopefully find a solution for your pool.
I'd be remiss if I did not mention Mr. Randy Blankenship back here, who's our board president. Our Board of Education is fully in support of this opportunity as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors would like to speak?
Yeah, my name is Daryl Smith. I live in 418 West Warren. And the reason here is basically because I live in West Warren. There's a, the block I live on is going downhill fast. I'm gonna tell you. I've been coming, I've talked to at least six, eight people over the last eight years to try to get my neighborhood straightened out, and it isn't happening. Okay? I believe it was Ward 4, and I have one neighbor, bless his heart, that I think he run the junkyard out of his yard, you know, whatever. Another one, there's just trash everywhere and all this kind of stuff. I've got a house almost across from me that's been on fire twice, still standing. My daughter came in from Florida, I was ashamed of her coming. We ought to have, I think we ought to have more, I mean, make the main street look pretty fine, you know, that's cool. My house looks as good as I can get it to look and all, and I respect my neighbors and so forth and so on. And with your help, I don't know where else to go. I've talked to several people here at City Hall, I even went to the courthouse and everything. I don't know where else to go. And I know there's ordinance, I read it on the internet today and all this kind of stuff. I was told the house that cut off fire twice isn't. I mean, when the wind blows the roof, you can actually hear the tin and all this stuff. This is crazy, you know? And I really appreciate your help, I really would. I think it, West Warren used to be a really nice neighborhood. I've been there since 1978, raised my children there, and I'd love to see it, I would, I appreciate it. Thank you for this.
Thank you. Thank you. So, the one house that's caught on fire is the one that we're going to knock down this year, depending on funding?
I was told that, yes.
Oh, I get that, but we have funds, so that's the one that we have marked for allocation dropped a bit, and provided it comes in under budget, we'll be able to knock that one down. The one that's owned by Nicole Temple was 417 or something?
Was the house, uh...
415 and 404.
415?
That's the one with the trash?
403 is the one with the trash. It's on, it's right on the corner of Grace and on the south side of West Warren.
Right, so we've been working, and we file on to go to court with her multiple times a year. She has now vacated and moved to Columbus, and so we're trying to get the bank to foreclose again, because they foreclosed and then dismissed their foreclosure for some reason. But if the bank would foreclose, then they could theoretically sell it to another owner who may clean it up or tear the structure down, something to that effect. And then I know the junker that you're talking about, and we'll talk with him.
As a 406, that's what my...
I know who you're talking about. He's all right, but we'll work with him.
I like the guy.
I know.
I mean, I like the guy.
But absolutely, the house, the one that's caught on fire needs torn down, that's what, the money that I have left in the budget, that's the house that we're going to go after. And then the Nicole Temple on Ford, whatever it was, yes, that's been an eyesore for as long as I've been here.
My understanding, that house was on the internet for sale at one time, not this past year. My understanding that a gentleman, I don't even know the people who live there, the gentleman that supposedly bought the place, what he did is took a lot of that junk, and now I'm telling you, it was piled.
Oh, for sure.
And crammed it in the garage. So, the other day, when we had all that wind and stuff, it's blown off, what's left's blown all over the neighborhood and stuff. And it really looks terrible, you know? I got pride in my community, and then I've been up here since '66. I moved here in '66. I've been in his house since '78, and it used to look a lot different now down through there. And, I mean, I'll do what I can, you know, but I definitely need some help on it, and I've been to a lot of people talking about it, and it just don't seem to be going anywhere.
That guy that allegedly bought that house, does he still live there?
The one on the corner?
Mm-hmm.
I think there was a, I don't even...
There's a guy that was allegedly bought it and was fixing it up, but the title never transferred, and I think it was probably written on the back of a napkin or something.
Yeah, because my understanding, there was a lady that lived there.
Nikki.
And she said, after buying the house, she couldn't afford to clean it up.
Right.
I don't understand that. So, my understanding was they gave her a year or something like that to clean it up or something.
Well, no, so she went to court, right? And the court found her guilty and put her on probation for a year. And so, they didn't give her a year to clean it up, so her term of her probation was to keep the, get the house into compliance and keep it in compliance over the term of her probation. With the, but the unfortunate reality is, the judge is very remiss to put somebody in jail on a property maintenance issue.
Well...
And you, I mean, you could fine her $1,000, and she's not gonna pay.
You know, that's not, I live on, I live on Warren Street and on Rensselaer when I first started coming up here, right behind my house. I won't even say who owns it, probably everybody knows who it is. I liked the heck out of the guy, good guy. But there hasn't anybody lived in that house for, I'm gonna say 12, 13 years, okay? It's been posted twice, it's been condemned twice, and my understanding, and I won't name the judge, has pulled that two times, okay? Now they've moved into it, how in the world they live in that place is beyond me, but now, now the owner and his friend and whoever, they're living in there now. And I just, there's, I know there's animals through there, because they come to my place, you know, and stuff like that. But I don't understand how a place can get posted, okay, twice. And it, I know the judge's name, but anyway, they, I was told the judge had it taken down both times, allowed the guy to keep the place, allowed it to be there, whatever, you know? And like I say, I've been friends with the guy for a long time, he's whatever, and, but now they're living in it, I don't understand that. I don't have, they were supposed to put a porch, a front porch on that within a year, that's been over six years ago. They're supposed to fix a side porch that's never been touched. Now there's people living in it. I just don't understand how this can continue to go on, okay? That's why I'm here.
Yeah, no, I absolutely understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on to communications and petitions. We have a letter from Sheri Young, 905 Nevada Road.
Each council meeting for at least the last two months, I have heard at least one person mention the reduction of the tax credit for out-of-town workers. I am not unfamiliar with the situation the city currently is in, and I'm not unfamiliar with the difficult task of balancing a corporate budget. I realize there are no funds available this year for the opening of the pool, and there are no funds available to cover wages for safety forces for the entire year at its current base. I do not envy the work or the decisions that you, the council, have had to make and have had to justify. Surely, the reduction of the tax credit isn't the only thing being looked at, right? What is city administration currently doing to also look at revenue? The mayor mentioned he has seen this coming for a year. That's a year he's had to plan and look at additional revenue options. Has there been any changes in fees for permits, licenses, registrations, or other services? What has the tax department done to optimize collection of past due payments? What has the mayor been doing to attract industry leaving the city, to attract citizens to move to Bucyrus? The tax credit reduction is not the savior to the budget woes, or it shouldn't be. There is an income tax levy right around the corner for safety forces. I'll bet you there will be an abundance of out-of-town workers voting for this levy. When this first came up, council discussed this as an alternative to the tax credit reduction. Now I keep hearing this repeated week after week, but not in context of if the levy fails, it doesn't, and it doesn't set well. You get most out-of-town workers to vote for the 0.25% levy, and then take part or all of the tax credit reduction away, and I promise you that there will be a mass exodus of the city, myself included. While that may not sound like much, what it will take away in loss is loss in additional revenue from spouses' income taxes, loss of local volunteer commitments, loss of local donations, and loss of good citizens. You will lose people that utilize this city's grocery stores, gas stations, pharmacies, salons, boutiques, insurance, healthcare, and restaurants, to name a few. A citizen recently mentioned OPEC news and the rising cost of fuel and the effects this will have on the city's budget. I am sure you can conclude the effect this will have on everyone's budget. I ask you to reinforce the trust many of us have put in you, and remember the conversations you had several months ago when discussing options to ensure the city's budget would sustain for 2023. There is a reason we have a 0.25% safety forces levy on the ballot in a few weeks. It is not in addition to the tax reduction, but rather in place of. Funds are needed to support wages of our police and firefighters. How much of the tax reduction will really get routed into that pot? With regard, Sheri Young, 905 Nevada Road.
Does anybody else?
I'll make a motion to second, file the petitions and communications.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does anybody else have any other communications or petitions they want to share at this time? Standing committee reports, plating?
I have nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
No report, Madam President.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report at this time.
Service?
No report this time.
Traffic commission?
Nothing, Madam President.
All right, moving on. Report to city officials, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I did submit a report, I'm not gonna read it, you know, because it's a few pages there, it's for your time to have a look at it and hopefully discuss it Thursday, and then the only thing I did want to say is, I'm very, very grateful to Mr. Britton, Mr. Clark, school board, for what they're doing for this young folks and citizens of Bucyrus by coming up with funds in a tough year. So, it's, it's really an incredible, incredible gift, and we're very grateful to them, so I want to thank them.
All right, Safety Service Director report?
Susan, can I borrow yours?
Oh.
I'm sorry. I forgot to print it out, so, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, this is Jeff's report. We're currently taking applications for a general labor for the street garage. The applications can be picked up at the mayor's office, or you can visit the City of Bucyrus website and print out an application. Bucyrus Little League continues to put the City of Bucyrus on a map, on the map, which we're grateful for too. They now have a Babe Ruth League, 13 to 16-year-old, many of us probably played in that league when we were younger. There's 15 to 20 teams from various districts, that's really incredible. So, this age group has been absent for 15 years, and they have two Little League tournaments coming up, May 6th and 7th, and June 9th to 11th. These tournaments are completely full. They are doing a fantastic job, and it's one of those things that really is, puts Bucyrus on the map, like Jeff said. People come and see, and they spend money, and just have a good feeling about us. So, Jeff wants to say thank you, all the volunteers there, and everybody that makes the Little League, it's so wonderful. City crews were out last week mowing properties and rehabbing some of the lawns that were torn up from snowplows, we apologize about that. But if yours is not done yet, we will be getting to it soon. We will, we continue to meet with our Catus to talk about our wastewater treatment plant. We continue to try to reduce CSO activations per our EPA consent decree that we signed, and we are right now on hold with the US EPA until the sewer plant decision is made, which they will be coming to one of our meetings here in early summer to present the findings. Piggybacking on the great news that we received tonight, we are now hiring lifeguards. We need four more to be able to staff the pool. So, we've got a group, but we need more. If anyone's interested, please stop up and fill out an application again at the mayor's office or on the City of Bucyrus website. Nevada Waterline is underway, going very well. They have over 10,000 feet, about two miles already put in the ground, and they're about a third of the way done. The Stetzer Road Waterline Project is at Ohio Department of Transportation and the Ohio EPA waiting for approval. After we get that, that'll be ready to go, go out to bid and get that set up. Cleanup Week is the first week of May as usual. You are allowed to put on extra six bags of trash at no charge, anything other than the extra six bags of trash, as well as televisions, tires, furniture, all that will be an additional charge. McKeever Engineering is going out to bid for the All Miller Park Service Road in the next two weeks. We'll keep you up posted on that, and we'll be meeting with Omni Fiber in the, Omni Fiber in the near future, and their engineer to go over the plan for broadband, which will become a reality here in Bucyrus, very excited about that. Church of God on Wetstone put on an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 8th, and was a huge success. You can go to Crawford County now's website, many pictures there to see, we thank them for doing that, and bringing some enjoyment to the kids of the community. The income tax department has, had extended hours, it opened on Saturday for the convenience of the residents. They came up with that on their own. That's, those are, they're great people down there. And Jeff wants to pass on a thank you to our auditor Kaylee Lewis and her staff, Kelly Schimpf and Chris Schnabel, for working the extra hours. And just as this meeting started, that was the official end of tax. I had people in line, they were gonna take everybody, but I know Kaylee will tell you that Kelly and Chris are exemplary people. We wish we had more people like that, they're wonderful, wonderful, they did a great job, a lot of patience, and they gotta be exhausted, so they'll be in there working still, there's a lot of work, a lot of males coming, they're gonna be really busy for a while, so if you see them, thank them. And that's all for Jeff's report.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add to what you had to say about the pool and the lifeguards. I don't know if you spoke to them, but I did get a phone call and an email from the president of the Board of the Bucyrus and Tiffin YMCA. They said while they were not able to help with running the pool for us, they will and are able to help get people trained. So, if there are kids out there that want to be lifeguards that are not certified, they pledged to us that they will assure that they can get those people certified to work for us, as well as if, when we get a newer manager, since our previous managers have gone to other jobs, they'll be able to share all their best practices and help put a program together to help us out.
Yeah, we're counting on that.
Make sure you knew that.
Yeah, that's great. We have already talked to the YMCA several times, so yeah, that's all, that's all in the works right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Law Director?
Thank you, Madam President. So, today I got a letter from the State Fire Marshal Bureau of Underground Storage Tanks Division, something. Buster, yeah. Back in, I think, 2018 or 19, the city removed underground petroleum storage tanks from the 407 Waters Street facility, and it appears we were supposed to submit some sort of certification that the ground was tested after that. So, I don't know, I reached out to the emergency management people, Jet Kander, I reached out to the group BEC, I think it's called BEC Fuel from Fremont, that did the removal, and touched base with the fire department. So, hopefully, we have that all resolved. We were supposed to submit that within 90 days, so we were a little bit late, but they've given us an extension till October 15th. But I figured I'd bring that to you guys' attention, because that came across my desk today. Previously, in executive session, we talked about the Civil Stalking Protection Order that was filed against Operation Hope care of Chief Ostenheimer. Like I told you guys, we filed, subsequent to that, we filed a motion to dismiss that based upon the fact that Operation Hope is not a affiliate of the Bucyrus Police Department. The only relation is sometimes we may, we used to make referrals to that. Our police, our chief is not their statutory agent, we don't, we're not affiliated, we don't employ them, they're not a branch of our Bucyrus Police Department, and the Bucyrus Police Department and Chief Ostenheimer have not stalked or done anything to this gentleman. And so, the court dismissed that. It was supposed to go in front of the judge tomorrow, but that got dismissed today, so that's good for our police department and Chief Ostenheimer. There is a second lawsuit, I guess, that was pending, or a settlement from Walgreens, Walmart, Tiva, and some other pharmacies, that the City of Bucyrus has opted to become involved in the class action settlement, run through the Ohio Attorney General. That's, we already got $4,037.15 from the Johnson &amp; Johnson opioid settlement, so this would be in addition to that. Again, the funds that we would get would be specifically earmarked for recovery services, addiction services, those types of things, but hopefully, we start to see some of those funds so that we can utilize those in some of our programs this year. And then previously, we referred the Pines Reservoir, and obviously, we talked about that, and it's still an open project, but I would like to discuss that further on Thursday. I've been approached by several people about what's going on, and I don't know what's going on, but they discuss things, and some of the gentlemen that have been here talked about trails, and, you know, they're utilizing it, and so then in the back of my mind, I worry about liability issues and attractive nuisance. My understanding is a big giant hole in the ground now, and some, multiple sources have indicated that there's shotgun shells, drug paraphernalia, four-wheeler tracks, alcohol bottles, those types of things. So, I think that it behooves us to do something, if not simply put up no trespassing signs or something to that effect, so as to prevent any sort of catastrophe from happening there, and having the City of Bucyrus be somewhat, even if we're not ultimately found liable, having to go through that based upon the doctrine of attractive nuisance and other things to that effect. So, I think that's something that needs to happen sooner rather than later, whatever route we go, just to protect us from any sort of law, lawsuit. And Ms. Sullivan, I have all of this written down for you. Here, what? I told her I didn't have a report, and then we got a couple of things that came in today, so I'm sorry. That's all I have today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Today was the last day to turn your income taxes in on time. I wanted to thank the citizens of Bucyrus for another tax season, and thank you to everyone who utilized the extended hours. I hope it helped to accommodate those working different schedules. A special thank you to our diligent employees, Kelly and Chris, in the income tax office for all your hard work. I want you to know that all those hand cramps from filing, from filling out paperwork are appreciated. I would like to refer to Finance Committee the following items. The city received a grant of $40,000 for a new valve trailer. We need to bring that $40,000 into the budget on the correct line to reimburse that expense, and the city auditor needs to be authorized to move that money. Two, the city received another grant, this time from FEMA, for $115,480 specifically for the purchase and demolition of a house in the floodplain. We need to create a new fund to bring those funds in as revenue. The city auditor needs to be, needs council's authorization to do this, all as an emergency. In separate legislation, we also need to bring the FEMA grant into the expense side of the budget by distributing those funds on the correct expense account lines. The city auditor will also need council's authorization to do this, all as an emergency. Finally, I would like to refer the creation of a purchase order to RA Boers for work that has already been completed in the amount of $21,633.46, as an emergency to remain in good standing with the vendor.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'll request emergency legislation.
I'll say so.
Actually, we just know we refer this to Finance, I'm sorry. Forgot what day it was.
Emergency, emergency referral.
Yeah, we refer this all to Finance, likely.
I'll say.
Sorry, Madam President.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever to refer all four referrals to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Lewis? No?
To try to get ahead of the pool situation, I think I should, probably, I'm not sure which is right. I was looking through here earlier when the announcement was made. I noticed we have a donation line in the pool funds, in the pool fund, and also a previous grant as an account line in the pool fund. I'm not sure for the amount, if we would just have to add an account or add a brand-new fund. So... just have to add an account or add a brand-new fund. So I'm, I may refer to Finance to more items, probably both as an emergency, in order to get it done on time. That to, we would probably need to create a fund as an emergency for the pool, or we would need to create an account line for the pool funds. And then we would also, I guess, three possible referrals. We would need to have a discussion, or we would also need to bring that money into the expense side so we can actually pay our bills and buy the chemicals and things as an emergency for all three of them.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
How about we make a referral to Finance for that, and that allows Auditor a couple of days till Thursday to talk to Mr. Cook and maybe figure out what the game plan is, and that will help you know what we're going to need to ask for.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherik. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President?
Yes.
While we're making referrals, I talked to Jeff Wagner this week, and I think the ODOT salt bids have to be done by May 1st. And so I would refer the ODOT salt bids to Service and Finance. And I'll talk to Jeff. I'm not sure. He didn't make his report.
It was from the last meeting?
Yeah, he referred it to. Oh, good. Well, we may need a special meeting then on Thursday.
I was going to discuss that at the end.
Oh, good.
When we're miscellaneous.
You guys already figured it all out?
No, it's your job to keep us in line, so thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else you can think of, Ms. Lewis?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. All right, you do have before you the treasures report and a motion to accept and file?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherik, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We do not have anything from Chief Ostenheimer or Chief Schwemblin, so I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports as presented.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by?
Spiegel.
Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on the reports of standing and special committees and the city officers' reports. Seeing none, consideration of proposed legislation for the second time?
Resolution number 214-2023, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, to ban vehicular traffic, including bicycles, except authorized emergency personnel on Saturday, June 10th, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight on East Warren Street for the, for the food court from 12:00 p.m., noon, to 12:00 a.m., midnight, along Sandusky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakwood Avenue, as well as the 100 blocks of East Mansfield Street and Washington Square, and 100 blocks, block of East and West Rensselaer Street, the 100 block of West Warren Street, and the 100 blocks of East and West Charles Streets, respectively, allowing access by local traffic and safety service personnel to the alleys located between Walnut Street and Sandusky Avenue, as well as the alleys between Poplar Street and Sandusky Avenue, in order that said streets may be utilized temporarily as a Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show, parade route for unexpected 600 custom and classic automobiles, more or less, and to provide as well sufficient parking facilities for the public display of said automobiles. Said special event to be sponsored by the Fraternal Order of Police, Bucyrus Lodge 68, must provide for and erect all signs needed to reroute state highways according to the directions of the Safety Service, Service Safety Director and Chief of Police. The Service Safety Director and Chief of Police are hereby authorized to make the necessary arrangements for the rerouting of affected traffic on both federal and state highways passing through subject areas to facilitate the orderly movement of traffic during a for said time period through the City of Bucyrus, Ohio.
May I have a motion to accept this as a second reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherik, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agreeing permission for anyone in the public that would like to speak to the second reading of the legislation. Seeing none. Refer back to originated committee proposed resolution 214-2023, refer back to health and safety. Committee report on pending legislation, health and safety?
Favorable to proposed resolution 214-2023, the street closures for the Cruising with the Cops car show.
Do we have any old or unfinished business? Do we have any new or miscellaneous business? As at this time, I would like consideration of council to hold a special council meeting at the end of the committee meetings this Thursday regarding the annual road salt legislation that needs to be passed as an emergency.
I'll make that motion. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Young. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will hold a special council meeting on Monday, sorry, gosh, on Thursday, immediately after the council committee meetings. And you'll get those notices posted?
Yep.
Thank you. We have no, any absent. All right, so referrals, we have the grant for $40,000 for the new, new valve trailer to finance, grant for $115,480 for the purchase and demolition of the house in a floodplain to finance, the move of the FEMA grant to expense side of the budget to finance, a purchase order to RA Boers in the amount of $21,633.46 for the work already completed to finance, the creation of the fund for the pool to finance, the creation of an account line to finance, and the creation of an expense line for the pool to finance. All emergencies except for the grant for the new trailer valve. Does anybody else have any referrals?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Wait, don't adjourn.
Don't adjourn.
Your special meeting, you should set a time, 7:00 PM.
We have to set time, not immediately following?
We have to do it directly after.
You have to set a specific time. So set it at 7:00, and if it doesn't start till after 7:00, that's okay. But you have to set a specific time, place, and, and purpose.
Okay.
What about for that, for that save, could we just schedule that first committee and then hold the special council meeting and go back to the rest of committees?
It's financed in the end. I mean, only because it's, I thought that, too.
Would you like to revise your motion, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to schedule said meeting for 7:00 p.m. or at the completion of the committee, whichever, well, whichever happens later.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Myers. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the amended?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any opposed? All right, we have a motion by Mr. McKeever. Did we have a second motion, Sherik?
No, it wasn't by me. It was Mr. Myers.
Mr. Myers? All those in favor to adjourn?
All right.
We're out of here.
Go count.